Okay, all right. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council. North Bend Urban Renewal Agency Work Session Agenda for Monday, March 20th here in the council chambers. After calling the meeting to order tonight, we'll go ahead straight to public comment. And I will look to our city recorder and does not appear that we have anybody in the council chambers for city comment or online. But just as a kind reminder, you're able to make public comments at any council meeting or work session. And that information is found on our website. So then we'll go ahead and move on to item three, which is our visitor convention bureau VCB annual report presentation. So we have somebody, a couple of people who are coming to the table that serve all sorts of roles in the community. Lucinda de novo is a councillor from Coos Bay. You might recognize her from there, but also has a role with the visitor convention bureau. And Ms. Janice, I'll go ahead and let you introduce each other and explain your roles.
Thank you.
She's not, he's like, she's trying to avoid saying Longley, but
That's all right.
I got it close.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and city council, city staff and any visitors in the room. I am Janice Longlinay. I am the executive director of the Coos Bay North Bend Charleston Visitor and Convention Bureau. With me is Lucinda de novo. She is our board chair. She is also the representative on our board from the Kukou Indian Tribe. Larry Garboden, who is sitting up there on the dais is our representative from the city of North Bend on the Visitor and Convention Bureau Board. And with us also online is Matthew Landkamer with Whereabout. He'll be speaking with us in just a minute. So we went through a recent strategic planning process. We felt it was time. This entity had been in existence since the late seventies and had never done a strategic planning process. As you will note, when I said where I'm from, our name got longer this year. We added Charleston to our name. So now we are Coos Bay, North Bend Charleston Visitor and Convention Bureau. And that is because the voters of Coos County did vote to approve a lodging tax in the Coos, in the Charleston area only. We have not yet seen any funds from that. They only collected one quarter so far, which was October through December. We should see some funds from that starting in April. But that is why this is now, we started out with a very stable three-legged stool funded by the city of North Bend, the city of Coos Bay and the Kukou Indian Tribe, which is now an even more stable four-legged stool with the addition of Coos County for the Charleston area. We do now have a representative from the Charleston area on our board of directors representing Coos County. You'll see from our budget here that monies from the county do not exist in this current budget for this fiscal year. One, because we did the budget prior to the vote. So we didn't want to anticipate that the vote would pass and put money in our budget that we then couldn't spend. But you'll also notice that we have about 54% of our income as of the end of the second quarter. But that we've only spent about 35% of that at the same time. So we are a little bit further beyond that now. But we are still in a really good relative position. Our marketing budget has grown in the last five to six years. As you can see from this last part of the graph, up to more than $700,000 annually for marketing and advertising, which is finally putting us in a place where we can compete with our northern neighbors. It's still not on par with what they can spend in Lincoln City and Depot Bay and Astoria and Cannon Beach. But we're getting there and we're making headway. We're seeing a lot of, a lot more response to our ads, a lot more recognition of Oregon's Adventure Coast. Coos Bay, North Bend, Charleston as this part of the coast and not the entire coast. These next couple of slides are just to give you a representation of what we do in a single quarter. This was Q3 of this fiscal year, and these are newspapers, broadcast. We did a press coordination. We have billboards, magazines, and digital ads and social media all over Oregon, but also Washington, California and beyond. And then I just wanted to remind you where we were prior to the pandemic. This is Coos County numbers because that's what we get from the state. Direct visitor spending, that means people spent money here. They didn't spend money to get here. This is what they spent while they were here. Visitors spent $277.3 million in 2019. That was a 4% increase over 18. And that lodging spend, I'm calling this out because you'll see in a, in a minute why that's important. $60.7 million was spent in our lodging properties. Of course, the pandemic hit and we lost quite a bet. We lost 170, we, we went down to 179.3 million dollars in 2020. That's what visitors actually spent here. A lot of that was lost in restaurants and retail because as you may recall, restaurants were takeout only and a lot of our retail shop were closed completely for, for a length of time. Our lodging spend, however, only decreased by about 5%, which meant people were still coming. They were staying in our hotels, but they were doing things that didn't cost any money. They were going out to the beach. They were going out on the hiking trails. They were fishing off the docks.
So when you compare this to the decrease in revenue to Portland or other markets, we were spared. And we should be so grateful that we live on the Oregon coast. The entire coast saw less decrease than obviously other, other communities in the state.
So in 2021, we recovered about 22% of what we had lost. So up to 218.6 million. And we're looking forward to seeing what our 2022 numbers are. We won't get that until about end of May, June. But this lodging spend, again, $69.7 million, which was higher than what was spent in 2019. So not only did we recover a lot of our lodging spend, the lodging spend that we lost, but we gained another almost 14%. So very, very positive movement for us. And of course, we saw, we had a fairly good year in 22 as well. So we're looking for, we may not hit back to the 277 just yet, but we're getting much closer.
I think it's also really important to point out that while the lodging spend was up, this really was because the hotels, because of supply chain issues, the average daily rate up. So we didn't see as many guests in the community. And so that's really our focus now is to drive more visitation here. We saw rate go up and you'll, you saw that throughout the entire United States and most definitely in Oregon as well.
So now we'll go into the strategic planning process. So we brought on, we, we put out an RFP to find a company that would help us do a strategic planning process. We set, we hired Matthew Landkamer with Whereabout. He is out of Portland. I previously was with the Coraggio Group also out of that area. But what Matthew brought to us was an ability to really focus on what our stakeholders were needing from us. And so what you'll see here is some response from a stakeholder survey as well as the upshot of everything that we learned. So Matthew, I know you're up there somewhere.
Yeah.
Let's take it away.
Well, can you hear me? Okay.
We can.
All right, Janice, I cannot see your screen. So I, I've got the presentation open on my end and I can sort of follow along and I think we'll, we'll stay in pace. But if you can advance so folks there can see where we are.
Okay, we're gonna figure out why I'm not, why you're not seeing my screen too. But so we're on the phase one kickoff page.
Okay, terrific. So thanks for that introduction, Ms. Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for having us today to share this with you. As Janice mentioned, I facilitated the strategic planning process. This is just a quick overview of the process, three phases. The first phase was that stakeholder engagement she talked about. Second phase of planning, and then we're in this final plan documentation phase where we're, we got the plan drafted and we're sharing it with folks like you to make sure we've got buy-in and understanding from all the communities.
Matthew, can I? You could tell people a little bit more about your background. I know you've been doing strategic planning process for quite some time and we were really fortunate to get you and I would love this council to just learn a little bit more about what you've done in your past.
Happy to do so. Yeah, I know it sounds, I'm from Portland, so it sounds like I'm the local firm, but Oregon is fortunate in that there is a lot of talent around destination strategy based in Portland. National level talent based in Portland, Coraggio Group is a big firm. I used to work for them. I led their travel and tourism practice for many years. I've been doing destination strategy for over a decade. And that's at every level from Brand USA to nine of the state tourism agencies to county and municipal agencies throughout the US. All different kinds of tourism strategies. So I, I'm able to bring a pretty broad perspective to these processes because I've seen what's worked and what hasn't worked in a lot of other communities. And have some idea of some of the sort of ongoing trends and best practices and can help strategic planning teams sort of think about these external factors as they think about what is important to them locally and what they want to grow as part of their visitor economy.
So I'm on the overview page now.
The overview of strategic perspectives, great. So this was the output of my discovery work. So we, we sent out a survey to 200-some stakeholders. We got 61 responses, I believe, if the number is right in my head. So it was a high response rate, actually. It was more than a quarter of the, of the links that we sent out, which is pretty high. I was pretty happy with that. And between that and some of the external trends and some of the data that Janice and Lucinda shared with me, I came back to the strategic planning team with these seven themes. And these were things for the strategic planning team to think about as we went into the planning process. Not recommendations per se, but sort of focusing element on what, what we needed to wrestle with strategically. So I'll go through these quickly. The VCB is seen as a strong effective organization. So that means it's a, it's a great time to start to leverage that more to promote the visitor economy. VCB has an opportunity to bolster stakeholder communications to foster greater industry momentum. I see that most places I work, there's a call for more and more communication with stakeholders. You can never quite do enough. But that was definitely something that came up in the survey. The core assets of natural beauty and outdoor rec are a basis for building some things that are adjacent to that in the visitor economy. Outdoor rec is notorious for being hard to monetize. But some of the things that are, that those folks also like to do can be opportunities. And there's opportunities to better monetize outdoor rec as well. Social challenges and infrastructure deficits might be limiting the visitor economy. So we heard about that in the survey for sure. Those sorts of challenges are existent up and down the West Coast and throughout the US, but not on, not untoucheding your, your communities. Workforce challenges combined with relatively consistent hotel occupancy points towards strategies to bolster your already strong length of stay. Length of stay for your destination is 3.6 nights, which is exceedingly high. I'm not used to seeing numbers that high in most places. And what that means is a little less wear and tear on the destination as people come and stay longer, linger longer, as we like to say. And so using that as a launchpad to, to stretch that even further can ease some of those workforce challenges that you're feeling. Generational and pandemic influence shifts in the labor market are an opportunity to capture remote work stays. Digital nomads, as they're called, is a growing trend and with proper supportive wifi and good places to work might be something you could take advantage of in your area. And finally, generational shifts in traveler expectations mean we need to think more clearly about sustainability and about diversity, equity and inclusion as part of our plan. So those were my seven themes that I shared with the strategic planning team. We use that as fodder then to start building the plans. We'll start with the vision. And I'm probably not going to read you the whole vision here. It's, it's a, a long statement, but you can see all the post-it notes on the right there. I assume you're on this slide.
Yeah, we're on that slide.
That was, that was the brainstorm that the board did around the vision for the destination. The board and staff together did that. The big ideas that came out of it, though, is what I want to share. More outdoor rec opportunities, better supported. So you know, whether that's guides or rentals for some of these outdoor rec activities that are located at the place where you do the activity. Some of those things that just make it easier for people to engage in those kinds of things. Expanded transportation options, ways to get there, but also ways to get around once you're there beyond just personal vehicles. More events, festivals and family activities. Diversified accommodations. So a broader range of price points and styles of accommodation to support different kinds of travelers. Locally owned restaurants sourcing local food. That came up a lot in our conversations. Folks were really keen on that. And a stronger focus on tribal tourism and a closer working relationship. So you can see over the next couple of slides, it's almost two slides long of, of a description. I think this was probably in your board packet or your city council packet. So I'm not going to read it to you. Happy to answer questions about it, though, once we're through the presentation.
Yeah. So I just want to interject here that this is, this is what we, we are looking to accomplish, not by ourselves. Certainly it's, there are a lot of things in this vision that we cannot do without support of city councils or even other entities creating what we vision envisioned for our destination. But this is what we would like to see come to pass in the next 10, 15 years even. Our strategic plan is for three to five to get us moving in this direction. So hopefully you have a chance to read it. It's very long, but it is in your packets today. So okay, Matthew, I'll let you get on to the mission.
No, that's fine. And hopefully it's a little bit inspirational. It's meant to be a bit of of aspirational as well as inspirational, meant to be a bit of a stretch. It's not unrealistic that these things could come to pass, but also, you know, it'd be a lot of work to get all these things to happen in 10 or 15 years, as Janice said. So we try to, we try to write these destination visions to be just at that threshold of, of aspirational. And so that's for the destination. The rest of this plan is for the organization, for the Coos Bay North Bend Charleston VCB. And so it's trying to, that, that organization exists to create that future for the destination, the region as a whole. But all the rest of this is for the organization. So the mission and the values and all those sorts of things are more localized to the VCB. So the mission here, as we wrote it, is to inspire visitors and create desire to explore the region. That's the classic destination marketing role and to contribute to our visitor economy through creative marketing, effective communication and destination stewardship. And so that's recognizing some of the role that the VCB has to be a good steward of the destination to induce, take on some of those other roles as necessary. The value statements for the organization are focused on three things. And you'll notice that it spells out awe. We didn't do that quite on purpose, but when we realized it worked, we're like, hey, you know, we're just going to go with that. Cause it is an awesome place. So acceptance is the first value. Our trust, care and mutual respect enable us to bring our whole selves to work. Wonder, we never lose sight of the privilege it is to work in this industry and in this place. And engagement, our dedication, ownership and focus on continuous improvement keeps our eyes on the prize. So this is how the VCB staff and board intend to work together. How they intend to show up as individuals and as a, as a working community. This is very much an internal tool, but it also will reflect how they engage with the community.
So that leads to our objectives, which thanks to Matthew, who is one of the best facilitators I've ever gotten the privilege to work with. We culled it down to five major objectives. So Matthew, I'll just take it from here.
Here, yeah. So these are the big bodies of work for, this is a three-year plan. So the big bodies of work that the VCB is going to take on. And I sort of have a rule, no more than five, especially for an organization this size. Because if you can't name the things you're doing on one hand, it's just, it's too much. It's overload. So five is a really nice, tight number. Each of these represents a body of work that has some supporting indicators, how we're going to measure success and some specific strategies that we're going to undertake in order to make that happen. So I'll share, instead of reading through these on this slide, I'm going to share each of those one at a time. And just sort of walk through those. And again, happy to take some questions once we're through the presentation of any of this that you're curious about. So objective one, drive visitation and length of stay. I already mentioned that the length of stay is exceedingly long, but we want to leverage that and go even longer and drive more visitation. So two indicators we'll look at here, we want to raise the length of stay to 3.75 days within three years from the current 3.6. And we want to see year-over-year growth in total visitation. And we have visitor location data. Data phi is your provider of that, I believe, right? That we can use to, to track that number year-over-year. Five strategies support that work then. Identify partner organizations to foster education and volunturism. And if you're not familiar with that term, that is when people come to a place and do things like trail repair or beach cleanups as part of their visit, as a way to engage with the community and give back to the places they visit. Develop consistent hotel partner packages and promotions. Create a cultural asset passport program and sell tickets through the VCB. So this would be for all the cultural attractions in the area of museums, et cetera. Could buy one ticket and be able to go to all of them. So this would require quite a bit of collaboration, but the VCB would be the, the seller of those passports. Focus marketing efforts on high-return verticals such as running and events. With the, the Steve Prefontaine history you have in your area, there's certainly a, a big focus for running, but there's some other events too that you can use to be sort of high return. And develop remote work and play promotions. As I mentioned, the digital nomad trend. Looking to find some opportunity there and get folks to stay and work a bit. And that actually would contribute significantly to length of stay if people stayed a week or two and worked while they were there. The second objective, and Janice and Lucinda just interrupt me if you want to add stuff. Second objective, deepen community engagement and education. Three indicators we'll look to here, improve stakeholder survey score on VCB communication. That was one thing that we decided we wanted to improve. I mentioned that earlier. So we'll measure that. Year-over-year growth in attendance of Tourism Week luncheon. That will be a new thing and we'll talk about that. And year-over-year growth of customer service score on a visitor survey. We want folks who visit to feel like they were served well by the folks that they interact with at attractions, at accommodations, at restaurants, et cetera. The strategies there, five of them, an annual Tourism Week luncheon, luncheon for stakeholders. There's a national tourism week that happens in May. And aligning with that and having an event in your area for the stakeholders in the, in the tourism industry will be a way to start to build some of those stakeholder connections and share some of the important work that the VCB is doing.
And I'll interject here and say, please put on your calendar, May 10. At the Mill Casino, that we are taking over the Chambers WBC luncheon that day. And that is going to be our Tourism Week luncheon. That is Tourism Week. So May 10.
This coming May.
This coming May. This coming. Yeah, within two months.
Okay, got it.
So yes, so we'll, we'll be doing presentation from the VCB, but we'll also have Todd Davidson, the head of Travel Oregon here for that luncheon. So we hope everyone will attend. The VCB is going to cover the cost of that luncheon for everybody who attends. And RSVP information will be going out soon.
And Todd will, Todd Davidson is, Travel Oregon is the state tourism board. So he will be here speaking from the state perspective and the strategic planning process, a strategic vision that they've gone through. And then we'll talk locally about our numbers.
Okay, Matthew.
The rest of the strategies here, deepen engagement and relationship building with local businesses and tourism stakeholders, including frontline recognition program. So doing an annual award for folks who are frontline service workers interacting with visitors and, and reward them for doing great work there. Adopt and deploy customer service curriculum for tourism businesses. So not to create our own, there's good stuff out there, but finding one and helping local businesses get access to that so that their staff can get good training. Partner with the Chamber of Commerce on business education and translate board reports into a regular industry newsletter. So we're generating that information. We're just going to share it more broadly and be more intentional about that. Objective three, nurture and promote a sustainable, diverse and welcoming community. This goes back to those generational shifts that I mentioned that it's important to start to focus on. So two indicators here, year-over-year growth and visitor perception of destination sustainability. And a year-over-year growth and perception of welcome on visitor survey. You can see that we're going to need to institute a visitor survey. A lot of these measures have to do with how visitors perception is shifting over time. And so we're going to need to start surveying visitors to find that out. Four strategies here, launch and sustain an annual visitor survey, as I just said. Engage VCB in being at the table on local conversations and planning around sustainability and diversity. So knowing that the VCB can't run a lot of these processes, but should be part of the conversation. And so being more intentional about making sure that, that they are. Develop a sustainable tourism section on the VCB website and lead the creation of a DEI plan, diversity, equity and inclusion plan for the local tourism industry. And I will say too, that when we think about DEI and travel and tourism, that includes accessibility for travelers with disabilities. Something like 15% of the population has either a visible or invisible disability. And that's growing over time as baby boomers age and many more of that, that large generation cohort become disabled. So this is, this is a part of it. And it's something that the VCB is already taking some steps on. Janice, if you want to make a quick note on that.
Yes. So we have engaged a, a company called We'll the World. We've received a grant from Travel Oregon to do an assessment of our destinations or our hotels, our attractions with the ease of getting to places and from places. And they are not here to ding anybody and, and you know, get ADA on anybody. It's, it's to promote the things that we do well. So hopefully we'll start seeing some promotion around the things that we do well, that our, our hotels do well, that our attractions do well. So.
We also think it's an opportunity for more funding. There's been a lot of success in Yaha. So access, easy access to the beach. We've got Moby mats that I think the Yaha's has now. And they received grand dollars for that. So people can get on to, the beaches easier. It's the access of trails. And as Matthew said, it's a large portion, right, of visitation here. And so it's about making that experience better and hopefully attract more visitors ultimately. Yes.
So we're running a little long. So Matthew, that's objective four.
Objective four, advocate for asset and infrastructure improvements. Three indicators here, an improvement in the aggregate multi-modal transportation score on the stakeholder survey. So when we ask people about transportation options across different modes, we want them to rate them higher and higher. An increase in commuter flights to our airport. And a year-over-year increase in average tourism infrastructure score on the visitor survey. Three strategies to support that, a prioritized list of transportation gaps and advocacy for strategies that solve them. An asset map for adventure equipment rentals, including access opportunities for persons with disabilities. And advocacy to expand the geography and quality of broadband access in the region, including and specifically at the state parks. Where I understand connectivity is quite poor. And finally, objective five, build our organizational capacity. Three indicators, year-over-year growth in volunteer headcount. That's been a challenge during the pandemics. We're looking to bring that back up. Year-over-year growth and open rate in our stakeholder emails. And a growth in general satisfaction score on the stakeholder survey. Four strategies to support that, hiring some PR contractors for visitor-facing content. And to broaden the capacity for stakeholder communication. Performing a skills and capabilities gap assessment for the staff. Formalizing a professional development plan for the staff. And enhancing volunteer recruitment should all support those goals. We need a stronger VCB to achieve all the other goals in the first four objectives. So this one is the one that supports all the rest of them. That's the content of the plan. Janice and Lucinda, anything you'd like to add?
I just want to thank the work that the city of North Bend has done. Your focus on making it a more livable community for its citizens, but also the vision and recognition by doing that, it's all. by doing that, it's also more desirable for visitors. People know that I'm a huge fan of Astoria and the work that they've done for years. And we just had a economic development conference here about six months ago. And I heard people talking about, wow, this place has like an Astoria vibe with the work that you're doing with your Main Street project, with the work that the city of Kuzbay is doing with the Front Street project. There are so many great examples of us doing the good work. And so when we look at four, right, that that objective infrastructure that is talking right to city governments and making sure that you're, you know, helping us improve the process. So thank you so much for the work that you do. I was really passionate about the strategic plan because I felt like we needed to let our funders know how that money was being spent. And Janice, we're so fortunate to have Janice. We spend a lot of time talking about ROI. And Eric can speak to that as well. And so the 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 data that we talked about here, we're really making informed decisions with data. And I'm just really pleased with the work the VCB has done and so thankful to the work that you do as a council and supporting the industry.
Thank you. And is it time for comments?
Yes.
Okay, I know we're we're running behind schedule, but I just, I really want to point out those numbers that you said, because I think that it goes by so quickly that people are not. If they're listening at home or they share it with their friends, they're really absorbing that in two thousand nineteen, two hundred and seventy seven million dollars into our economy, not getting here, but spent in our economy, and even during the pandemic, two hundred and eighteen million dollars. So when we do things like bringing back the Main Street program and putting an ice rink downtown and working with you and partnering that, those aren't just off the cuff decision. These are strategic plans about how to get people to spend time downtown. Listening to music, going to the restaurants and all that. So it is being partners with you and the support that you have given us and the cross promotion, it's only going to get better. So I don't think we really have time for any burning questions right now, but I know that we know where to find you. And and if there was anything else that's not, then we'll look forward to the update as it continues, right? And we'll see you at the Wednesday Business Connection, May tenth.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Okay. So, yes.
Mayor, can we get the doors shut because it's already starting to get cold?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect. I did bring my jacket specifically for that. All right, well, that was a wonderful presentation. Like I said, if we have any questions about things, I want to follow up on wheelchair mats for the beach and find out that later, but we'll go ahead and send our messages into the city administrator and can get them answered. The next item of business then on the agenda is I know number four, Councilor Nordoff, you had a request. And wanted to, it says, propose changes to livestock and fowl ordinance. And we do have some documents in our packet on those. So Mr. City Administrator, did you have anything to add here? Or would you like me to hand this over to Councilor Nordoff now?
Now, this is a counselor request. They have fifteen minutes and if it's an item to move on to a regular council meeting, it'd take four consecutive nods from counselors, and then we have thirty days to put it on a subsequent agenda.
Gotcha. Okay, Councilor Nordoff, the floor is yours.
Mason, could, would it be possible to put the photographs that I had turned in? Would you bring those up on the? I do not have one. You're not? Okay.
Okay, so we do have photographs in our packet.
Right.
Yes. Are these photographs you took?
I'm sorry?
These are photographs you took.
So we have the ordinance here. Which is pretty simple. It just talks about the definition of at large foul keeper and livestock. And at large, it shall, the only constraint here is at large. It shall be unlawful for any owner or keeper of livestock or fowl to permit the same to be at large within the city of North Bend. So it's very basic. And the photos, the first photo, which is a backyard that because the renters of the property, they they wanted to have chickens and they got real intent about it and they brought in, there were probably between fifteen and twenty chickens there, along with some additional little guys, little little chicks. Now, the backyard has, because chickens do the chicken thing, they pick at every laid of grass and there was no grass left at all in the backyard. And it was a fairly small space. The lot itself is forty five feet wide on the street. And then a hundred feet deep. So the chickens took care of all the grass. There's no grass left. And twice, because there's one house, and this is single family housing in the RM zone. So.
Were these and are this, these particular pictures, were they sent to you? I'm confused about the.
I could see this backyard from my house.
Okay.
And and I know the property to the north of this, and I took the photos from that property. So you can see a little ramp on the on the left. A little bit ahead, that is the ramp that the chickens go inside and roost at night. But because there's no requirement in our city code to keep chickens within a a space that is fenced and has 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 some type of enclosure so that chickens don't get out. Twice, I found piles of feathers and cloths in the neighboring yard between this property and my house. So the raccoons got the chickens because the chickens got out, they fly over the fence and it's kind of sad. The these, this young couple with two little girls bought a place out on Wildwood Drive and they have moved chickens and all. They're they're gone. They're going to be, you know, county residents. But one chicken got left behind and he wandered the neighborhood and I know that somebody finally adopted this poor chicken and now there's somebody has a pet chicken. But I was kind of fearful that, you know, he would come to the same end that these other chickens came to. Okay, so when I saw this and I went ahead and looked up the ordinance that we have, and it's basically you you can do what you want as long as and and you can keep any kind of animal you want evidently according to our ordinance. You can have livestock. You can have chickens, you can have turkeys. I mean, there's, there's no controls here at all. So basically, I went and looked at the other ordinances in the county. And they're more extensive than ours. And I just think I would, I would like not to have another situation where the backyard turns into a barnyard without any grass. And the critters get out and they get killed by the raccoons. I would like to ask for your help and referring this to our staff. And and the staff can take a look at the other ordinances and and see what we, how if we might improvement. Now, I will also call your attention to this, this is really kind of when, when, okay, the last part, there's the definitions, there's the at large and and what that's not lawful to let your your goats roam the streets or your cows. There's no controls here. You can have pigs, you can have goats, you can have camels. I mean, there's no control. And then the violation penalty. Any person who shall willfully or negligently violate any provision of this chapter shall upon conviction thereof be punished by a fine and in an amount to be set by council resolution for a first offense and an amount to be set by council resolution for a second or subsequent offense. So that's about as squirrely as it can get. I mean, I I'm just not sure how that would actually work and be consistent. And thankfully, we don't have to deal with this very often at all. But this, this was a pretty bad situation, in my opinion. And I think we really do need to tighten up the ordinance, and I would just ask for your support on that. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for us to just and and I would refer you to the other ordinances, the Coquille ordinance. Golly, there's, there's animals generally, and then animal enclosures to be maintained. All such chickens, ducks, geese, or any other poultry or domestic fowl shall be kept in a suitable enclosure constructed of wire or other suitable material of sufficient height and construction to prevent such fowl from escaping there therefrom. No place where such fowl are kept shall be permitted to become filthy or in the sanitary or in any condition or foul or not just orders, et cetera, et cetera, vermin, that kind of thing. So and improper management of that of animals, that's one section. The city of Kuzbay. Animals for which a special permit must be obtained. Five or more poultry, let's see here. No horse, unless otherwise authorized by the ordinance. No horse, mule, donkey, pony, cow, standard sized pig, goat, sheep, llama, five or more poultry, five or more rabbits or any other animal raised for fur bearing food or writing purposes shall be kept within the city limits unless a special written permit therefore is issued by the city after inspection. That's code, that's Kuzbay. Band-ends, band-ends was their their animal ordinance is seventeen pages long. I'm not going to, but the the table of contents is two pages. And then specifically, it says swine or pigs, no swine or pigs shall be permitted inside the city limits. Bees, the keeping of bees shall be limited to if you have one hive, your minimum lot size has to be ten thousand square feet. For two or more hives, it's another twenty five hundred square feet for each additional hive. Minimum acreage for farm animals, you can, let's see. One to four fowl or poultry. Rabbits. There's no minimum lot size for one to four. For five, there's has to be ten thousand square feet. So you can see that there's a whole range of specifications that are designed to to just minimize any type of a adverse health effect from having too many animals or maybe the wrong kinds of animals. Some of the cities, we don't want this, we don't want that. So that's kind of I would just ask for your support. I just, I don't think anybody needs the neighbor's backyard to turn into a barnyard.
Okay.
It's terrible. Okay.
So your, so your request is that you're asking the council to ask the staff to review our livestock and fowl ordinances?
That's, that's true. And just, I understand, I wanted to kind of bring this to the council before Eric left because he's in the health department. Thank you, Eric. And and it certainly takes the back back seat to what we're dealing with in the housing, the homeless camp. It certainly doesn't have to be a priority, but I I just think, given this situation, I I think that we need to tighten up the ordinance.
Questions from the counselors?
A few.
Okay.
I used to have chickens in my backyard.
Yeah.
Good. And I want the most, the closest I ever got to be in Indiana Jones was trying to chase one of my chickens down the back hill through the woods. I found her hours later, my neighbor.
Oh, I forgot one thing.
Okay, let me let.
Sure, sure.
Speak.
So you said that this is in your neighborhood, this is close to your house?
Yes, it is. It's on the same side of the street. It's two lots north. And but the there are other photos there immediately to the south, which is a rental property. It's a nice sized lot and they put in, they have six chickens and it's a ten foot caged with part of it's covered and then the little coop that they run in and they stay right within that area.
So I'm going to ask just for complete transparency. I want to make sure that we aren't going to put our butts in a sling. This isn't that house, is it? This isn't the house that filed like in issue with you before. It's not the same house.
It is the same house.
So wouldn't that look like we're trying to?
I, you know, I think.
You know, I'm going to actually consult our attorney here.
Because I was. I don't want anybody to get.
Let me.
You do realize that that charge was dismissed, don't you?
Okay, I'm going to put a pin in this for just a minute. Mark, are you, you're here with us. I do want to ask a question. We have Counselor Nordoff is asking for proposed changes to the livestock and fowl ordinance. And it is her neighbor and there has been a previous situation with her neighbor and her. Is she putting and to, is she, is Counselor Nordoff putting herself in a position right now coming to the counselor that she is using her authority to move something in the council? If, does that make sense of where I'm trying to go with this? I don't want her to put herself in a position that could get her or the council in trouble, whereas since we are a complaint based our, our, our our, how we usually move forward with something like a livestock ordinance would be a complaint base. Would this be a better situation if it was coming from another neighbor in the neighborhood rather than Counselor Nordoff? If that made sense at all?
Yeah, I I think that it does. And I think at this point, all that the council is considering is whether or not it shall refer the matter to staff to to review its ordinance. So I guess I can see a a huge problem with that. Because at this moment, there would be no action that would be, you know, there'd be no change to the ordinance. It would be direction to staff to review this ordinance and any other related ordinances to come back for future consideration. So I don't, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay, no, because I'm not trying to say that in a negative. I want sure that nobody is putting themselves in any issue.
Let me, I want to make sure that our council rules are that everybody gets to speak and then we can come back to you.
I can speak specifically and it might be appropriate.
I, I'm going to, I'm going to have you wait. Okay, all right. Were you able to finish your thought? On, was there another question?
Well, the only other question is, have we had a lot of fowl complaints?
What now? But he's asking our staff what what foul complaints that we have had. I think our, is our police chief coming forward? Okay, thank you. And then we'll we'll go to you, Counselor Jones, next. Or and we have, we have several people in the room from our staff here in the foul complaint departments. So it looks like our chief of police is up first.
This question was brought to me by Counselor Nordoff previously, and I checked with the previous code enforcement as well as our current code enforcement for justice, so we get some some sort of idea how many complaints we had received within the last five years. And there had been two. One was from Counselor Nordoff and one was regarding some geese that were down on Wall Street. And that's what we've gotten the last five years.
Wall, Wall Street geese. Okay, all right, thank you. So I think that answers Counselor Nordoff's question. Thank you. Counselor Jones, it looks like you might have a comment there, question?
Yes, so so I think I agree that it would make sense for the staff to review this and put some limitations in, especially because our population density is only getting increasing. And so I would just, if if this does turn out to be something you know, is something because a counselor was involved earlier before this. Is there a timeline? Can we visit this at a later point or something? Because I think it would be very useful for us to put some regulations in before, rather than wait for the great raccoon gang to terrorize the neighborhood and say, you know, because I think that's, to me, that's the most important part of this, is is the pests that are drawn and, you know. So so I I think this would be a great idea to review. And I just want to know, how can we do this so that we can avoid sort of prior things?
Okay, all right. That's your question. I'm going to, I'm going to, Counselor Garboden?
I'm a firm believer, stop broke, don't fix it. I mean, if we've had two or three complaints. And if who wants to get your rat or your your chicken or the fish in your fish pond, they're going to get it. I don't care what you do to try and cover it up or anything else. They're still going to get them. Personally, I don't think we need to change it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Counselor Gall, did you have?
I'm with Larry. It's not broke, no infected.
Okay. Counselor Schultz?
I'm kind of leaning that way too. Two complaints in five years does not seem like it's a hot topic. And again, maybe as our population does increase, there could be more. And again, maybe I don't want a great raccoon event to occur, but I do think that there'll be more as complaints increase, then I would be more likely to to want to think about limiting some things. But as as I know people who have had chickens, like raccoons are real sneaky and they'll get them. Yeah, like a lot, like with gates and timers. And so I've never had an experience where I will, and pets are expensive as well. So I just think that people are taking on the cost. So I would say it's not broke, don't fix it.
Okay. So my comment is similar as far as since we are complaint based and we've had two in five years. I wouldn't move it up to the top of the priorities with all the things that are going on. I trust our staff, I trust our our code enforcement office and to know if there started to become complaints about the situation that they would bring it to us and say, hey, it's time that we review this. I get tips on making the T-shirt on the raccoon gang. Copyright that. Copyright that, um, but that is where I would, it doesn't seem to, we have a, we do, I am hearing that Counselor Nordoff is having a problem in, in her neighborhood and her neighbor. Um, but it wouldn't be something that I think we need to do to the top, top of the list this year. It doesn't seem to align with any of the strategic goals that we did set for the year. Um, but it is probably something to keep on the back burner, of, of, back of our minds. Um, that if this does start to become a problem, and to alert our staff. Um, that, then there might be, you know, I mean, the cost of eggs are going up, so we might all of a sudden have a huge chicken, uh, chicken gang in our neighborhood.
I just had a raccoon on my roof tapping on my window once.
Oh, true.
Was, in full compliance with city ordinance.
That one was looking fine, so, before I let Counselor Nordoff make one more uh comment to conclude, I was just gonna look to our city administrator or um code enforcement, if there was, seemed like there was a couple kind of questions about what that process would be, um, if we were to move forward, if this is something that is sort of in your world that you do every couple of years anyways, um, but give you a chance to say something, but it's, I, I think I'm hearing it from a consensus of the council that it doesn't seem to be a burning issue right now to put as a top priority. Um, but was there anything else that you, from your, your staff that you wanted to add?
Um, well, obviously, you, you've heard from a department head who conferred with uh our city planner who used to be code enforcement, so. Um, and then um I'd just simply refer you to your council rules that states that um all counselor requests, whether for a work session or regular agenda items, should be considered by the council in light of its goals and priorities, as well as staff capacity and availability, especially those that are timed insensitive, intensive. Um. The, the council yielded to what's really intensive right now, which is the work on the camping ordinance, there's a lot of departments involved in that. Um, but two, a, a geese and a chicken incident are isolated, uh, you've had more dog complaints in just one year than that, and so you put that into perspective. And so if the council wanted staff to review the ordinance, we'd review it, come back to you and overhaul it. But the question really is, is there a need? Because there's not a problem. Um. I will say, um, when, um, when, when the prior incident had come up, I do know that the counselor had consulted with our police chief at that time. She had presented the chicken issue and was asked, this is probably not the most appropriate time, because it was a hot biting back and forth with the property owner, and so she was actually encouraged to, you know, once this settles down, brings back, I think she has done that. I think that it's the will of the council, and the consensus we're hearing, is probably the same thing you're hearing, that at this time, uh, we move on. Um, and stay focused on the council's uh, uh, goals and priorities.
Counselor Nordoff, did you wanna?
Yeah, you know, I just, um, oh, I. Obviously, you have not been affected by a barnyard two doors away from you. And I would not wish it on anyone, it does not improve your home's resale value. Fortunately, those people left. So it's a moot point at this point, but they left behind a god-awful mess. And to her credit, the landlord, landlady, Erica Fair is planting grass and has really improved her property management. Um. Results, but for the council to sit here and say, oh, let's wait till it happens for, to somebody else, and people actually make a complaint to the city, I think that's really a, a bad idea.
Madam Mayor.
Bad approach.
Madam Mayor.
Wishes the problem on someone else.
Okay, Counselor Nordoff.
Madam Mayor, you're, you've exceeded fifteen minutes, the council, per your rules, has to decide whether or not.
All right.
I believe it's become personal.
Thank you for.
So I would recommend that you move on to your next.
Thank you for your reminder on the time, I am hearing a consensus from the council that um, this is not something that we need to move on the agenda at the time. So we'll go ahead and, um, uh, if you have any further questions for us, let us know, but I think you've heard our consensus. Um, that'll take us to the next work session agenda, which is, um, let's see here. Number five, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-five, council goal review groupings.
That's Macy.
Okay.
You asked them. Uh, Mayor and Council, thank you, um, we had uh received the last uh rankings uh from the two counselors that could not make your initial uh strategic plan. Uh, our city recorder has uh taken the time to uh tally your individual uh votes. Um, these are the rankings, you'll see that they're categorized um score-wise, uh, basically by first, second, third, fourth. Um, as to what you all prioritized as a team of your priorities and initiatives for the next two years. Um, yes, there's always other uh goals that are listed, that doesn't mean that those uh don't get addressed, but you always look at your priorities. And so, um, this is something that I want the council to sort of absorb, uh, take a look at. Uh, let us know whether or not you still have the consensus that those are your uh top four key areas. If so, then what staff does is they go to the next step of creating uh the objectives and the um indicators and the strategies portion of the document. Uh, keep in mind, one of the things that uh we had deferred uh was that uh the council wanted to take a hard look at its uh mission and vision statement. Um, and so we will go through that process. Um, but uh staff would like to uh hear feedback on your overall ranking, and whether or not that meets the mark, and if so, we'll uh move forward with the next iteration. And uh bring it before you at a future uh meeting, uh ultimately for final review and potential adoption.
Okay. Just to reiterate, this document here was when we did our strategic goal planning session, we had the stickers, we all got to put our priorities, and that's compiled right here, so like, for example, um, out of all of us, there was like seven dots on determine long, long-term additional funding for the city, right? Down to the ones that received zero.
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a, a, remember, Ms. Macy, how many dots did they have total? So you had sixteen, you could put sixteen on one, or you could put more than one on one, depending on where you wanted as an individual, your consensus, um, after you saw the compiled list of goals, so.
Okay.
So that's not to say all seven put that on, what it means is that you had, that was the highest uh vote um initiative.
How many of these goals are we gonna take from here? Like the top ten?
So in this, you basically have, have created what we believe at this time, the four categories. And so what we try to do then is if you're comfortable with the first, second, third, fourth tier, we try to create that into the goal document, and then staff will take some of these and group them. We come up with um the top tier objective for each of those four categories, there may be only three categories. Um, we sort of worked that last uh time we did this, there was four. Um, and then within that, uh, you'll have your strategies um below them. And sometimes there is a goal or two that's closed, or that we know is achievable, and if it goes in with the tiers, we'll slide it up underneath that, but those are the lower priority tiers, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any questions from the council?
Yes, I have a question, um, so. When I look at this list, I, I thought that um stuff was in play already, so like, we're, like, a lot of this, we're already kind of working on. Right?
Mm-hmm.
And so what does the putting it up in priority change? I mean, maybe it doesn't change anything in some ways, maybe, but I'm just curious.
So something, so every time you have a change in council, sometimes you have a change in strategy or priorities. So staff has to zig and zag depending on what your goals and strategies are, and that's the reality. Because at the end of the day, you have the fiduciary responsibility, so some of these require money, you may just say, okay, we're not funding that move forward. That was great for the previous um uh governing body, but, you know, so ultimately, you dictate the finances of it, if there's policy that goes along with it, that's dictated. Um, but these are the initiatives that you say that you want your staff to work on uh for the next two years as your administration's goals. And then every two years, if the council has a change or a flow, you're about to have another one um uh soon. And so your council does go in, in sort of ebbs and flows, if you will. So every two years, sometimes um the uh priorities change, and that's okay.
And it doesn't mean that. I mean, there's certain things we have to do, we have, the, the, our public safety has to keep up with certifications and working and things like that, so.
They still have to meet their certification letter law, that's not gonna stop, the basic government functions do not stop. Because those are mandated, you know, if you're going to have, say, a police department.
Yes.
So they have to uh continue to uh maintain, for instance, their firearm certification. Um, so there's, there's all that that occurs anyway. These are council initiatives generally over and above, for instance, like the branding campaign. Um, is that a core function? No, but if it's important to the council, we incorporate that in to um the initiatives, and we get it done.
Yeah, so when we see like the new ladder truck, that's a way to say, when we prioritize that high, that's a way to say, we, we want that in the next two years, as opposed to, we're gonna keep working on that and keep saving, and it may happen the third year. This is what I'm understanding.
What we do then on that uh is, it's a priority item, and if it's a priority item, um, use a governing body uh basically figures out, you know, with staff assistance, how you're going to pay for it. Um, very much like we did the previous, um, staff is here to give you those recommendations, not to make the decisions for you. So we try to give you some options.
Yeah, thank you. Good. Clear? Okay.
Question?
Yes, Counselor Nordoff.
What is the one about? Uh, it's down in the, the third tier, pilot payment in lieu of taxes dash banger schoolwork with airport to establish fee for service, can you shed some light on that?
Um, a pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes, so for instance, um, when the city is providing services, um, where it is not receiving tax revenue or property taxes, it looks at a pilot, so there was a uh recommendation to um establish uh pilots where you're providing services. So for instance, uh, the reference, as I recall, from the banger school was um the Housing Authority, the Housing Authority um utilizes city services, so is there any pilots in place for services over and above what taxpayers already pay? Uh, a good example would be um, uh, the discussion that the council had over uh the fifteen-minute TSA airport delivery, where um folks pay for police services, but where you have value-added services above and beyond. For instance, when we worked with the uh Co-Well tribe that put uh property in the fee to trust, we equivalent created a pilot, which is, eh, uh, this is a payment in lieu of taxes, you're not paying us taxes, but you want services. And so this is the fee that we work out, uh, and we have a mutual uh contract and agreement. So that is what a pilot is, it's a payment in lieu of taxes um for folks that otherwise are tax exempt, but still want um uh premium or value-added services, otherwise not um regulated by state law.
Is the Housing Authority property, that is tax exempt? Is that the case?
Correct, yes.
So no taxes come to the um any of the taxing authorities?
Correct.
All right, so would that be an ordinance that would require, that would change that to put this pilot payment in?
Um, so, um, although that was put on there, um, there are certain stipulations in the law. So you as a governing body, not you, meaning individually, your predecessors, the governing body, actually created and authorized the Housing Authority. And when it um initiated that piece of legislation, you're governed by state law. So if they want services over and above, um, if the council says this is a priority, it is any services provided over and above the requirements of state law that you are looking for potentially a pilot.
What services above the norm would the Housing Authority require?
Uh, for instance, recently, um, uh, prior to the change in administration, they uh contacted us for uh environmental services and review as part of the Banger School project. And so, um, things like, uh, we get contacted from other governments to survey their properties, for instance. And we have survey services, and so uh we would charge for those services.
Okay. Is that helpful? Okay, all right, any other, we lost two counselors. Um. Well, we still have a forum.
I think you had them at pilot.
Okay.
Because they flew.
Uh, yeah, yeah, so pi- again, pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes, I think that is really helpful for people to understand. Mm-hmm, got it. Very different than a pilot project.
Yeah, yeah, it has nothing to do with airplanes, it just happens to be airports mentioned in there, yes, it has nothing to do with.
Yeah.
With any of that.
All right, so the next steps on this then are to have you, um, you'll uh come up with a grouping, and then they, do they, they come back to the council as, with official approval, correct?
Yes, so this would be the council's opportunity, if they wanna tinker with any of those that are in the first, second, third, fourth, this would be your opportunity to tinker, um, otherwise staff will um uh, uh, do our tinkering, um, to put it into a uh usable document, as we've done in the past, and bring it back before you.
Question?
Yes, Counselor Nordoff.
Yes, the sewer fee increase, wouldn't that have to go to a voting population?
Yes, absolutely. But it says that's a priority, which means that the governing body would actually have to um uh pass that at a meeting in order to put it on a future uh ballot initiative and take it to the voters.
Um. This is your, your, uh, we're tinkering.
Oh, are we tinkering?
This is our tinker time.
You can't tinker.
Um, and, and I think, I wanna make sure that we're really clear, like, our, you know, Counselor Nordoff, this is not a exhaustive list of expecta- expectations of everything that we're gonna get down in the next two years. Um, so if there was, you know, but these were, if you remember how it went, it was round robin style, everybody came up with the idea.
Asked us if we could comment on.
Okay, and I'm just, I'm just making sure that we're, like, this isn't the the final time that we would ever see this, and then all of a sudden, we magically come back with a sewer.
I know, that's fine.
Okay, but if there is something that's glaringly standing out, where we're like, what did we mean by that? Um, now would be the, now would be the time to bring it forward. Um. So I feel like this is a, it's a, it's a working document. So um I don't have any issues with the things that are on here right now. Won't be the last time that we're discussing it by any means.
Yeah, the next version will have, like I said, your objectives, and it'll have your indicators, our strategies. And so, and that's where we work with the staff, because it's the departments that actually have to hit on all cylinders to achieve the goals. And so, and then the, this, the department's heads, you know, I obviously manage the department heads, which means I have to get the council goals accomplished. And that's the team that helps me make it happen.
Yeah, okay.
So that's the version of the document that you'll see in the next.
Comfortable enough with then moving this forward?
And um, in your council packets, uh, your uh orientation packet, if you recall, for those not, this, this is the document that's, was like from two years ago. Which, which, which has, you know, your goals, priorities, strategies, things of that nature, so.
Yeah.
Um.
Counselor Nordoff has one more question?
Yes, um. I had a conversation with our Public Works Director when we were wandering around putting our little circles, and um, I asked what the budget was for streets, streets is back, it's dropped off the list, it's on the third page. And I think since there's a sewer fee increase that's in the second preferred category. From what I learned about streets, we are so minimally funded for any street repairs, that I would vote, I would suggest that we move streets to be up with sewers. Street and sewer fee increases somehow, that we can find more funding for street repair. Because it's like, really minimal, I forget what you said, two hundred and seventy-five thousand a year, something like that? Which does about, what, a block and a half?
Yeah.
About three.
I think I won them.
Three blocks.
Just remember, so when we had all those ups, we took that time to go around, and everybody had their dots, and they put them on the the thing, we kind of already did that piece. And I just turned off everybody's monitor with my feet. Sorry, Macy, I have long legs. Um, and I'm not saying, I'm not sure why I'm saying sorry, because I just, I have long legs, I kick things. So I don't think we're looking at reshifting any of those now, this is maybe more time for like clarification or questions. And also for anybody who's watching, we're not deciding on a street fee or a sewer fee today, yeah. Just wanna make sure that people have that in context here.
I just think that's more important than rebranding July Jubilee.
Did anybody want? Did anybody want to change their road at this time of? Move back in time for the dot placing?
We already put our sticker down.
Okay, okay. So we'll remember that in. The next time. Okay. All right. Thank you, City Recorder. Okay. Um all right, um that then, let's see here. I believe, are we on to, is it number seven?
Six.
I'm sorry? Oh, six is our camping ordinance. Follow up from the January sixth town hall meeting. Okay, and I think we have a nice thick packet in front of us too. There comes our city planner. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good. How are you doing, Madam?
Very, very good.
Good.
All right.
So at this point, we haven't made any additional changes to the camping ordinance that you all saw in March sixth. Um we are looking for guidance on what to change and how to change it. And that will come from you, obviously. Um what I'm gonna kinda go over is time, place and manner, what the consensus was. Um based on the tabletop discussions. And then um some timeline considerations for passing of this ordinance.
Okay.
Um so based on town hall comments, um there was a consensus for time, which was seven PM, seven AM. Is when camping should be allowed. Um there is some that had some very short timeframes, um. Some varying twelve hour timeframes. State law requires us to have twelve hours, so we can't modify that too much.
Okay.
Um we can kind of just adjust when that timeframe sits. Um for manner, there was no real consensus. There was a lot of good suggestions, um and some of those include uh for our managed camps, having clean and sober camps. So making sure that everybody is um on the straight and narrow in their managed, managed camps. Um some people wanted to maintain a roster for any managed camps, seeing who's coming in, going out. Um there was some suggestions for um square footage allowed per camper. Uh one suggestion was ten foot by ten foot area, um which I don't think is totally unreasonable. Um there was, you know, leave no trace. Um prohibition of camping within five hundred feet of. A school or sports field. Um changes to required camps or to managed camps would require a resident vote. And the list kinda goes on and on. There's a lot of suggestions um that were put together and. But again, no real consensus on any of them. Uh place was also similarly hard to find a consensus. Um there's a lot of place suggestions that were excluded uh due to being privately on property. Um outside of the city north bend or um, you know, illegal in terms of the law. And so I kind of tried narrowing it down from all of the suggestions. Um. And so some of those suggestions included uh Grant Circle, um the parking lot at Union in Virginia. The annex site Harbor Street. Um and again, this is one of those things that we definitely need. Um direction from council in order to put it in the ordinance. Um. Cause that is a, that is, that is the challenge. That is a challenging one. Um we do want to get a better definition for temporary and what that means. Um we currently have it a hundred and eighty days in the ordinance. Um there's a lot of comments regarding the temporary definition. Um and they range from anywhere from one to three months. Um. Were the productive suggestions. Um and we wanted to know if it's. You know, X amount of days within X time period, um or kind of what that looks like for you guys. Um and then for timeline on this, um we know that the ordinance has to pass June first. To have that incubation period to actually go in place July first. Um. May meetings are May ninth and May twenty-third. Um we highly suggest uh. Hearing it on or before the May ninth meeting to allow for multiple meetings, cause this is gonna be a contentious issue. Um and I think that it's important that everybody's voice is heard. Um and that is if you decide to pass an ordinance at all. Um but you know, what we're asking right now is some direction on kinda where to go from here. And how we can make these changes um compliant with state law and reflecting your goals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, maybe, maybe don't go anywhere yet. Um all right, so I'm just, I wanna make sure that we are still managing this meeting and keeping on time. Um because we do things to continue tonight. Do we wanna sort of set a limit on conversation for this? Right now or let it free flow?
Uh it's your meeting, Madam Mayor. So this is a established agenda item, so.
Can we have a special meeting?
Well, we're, I think this is it. We're running out of time, right? And so I am, I'm just. Think is our, our council rules or what their work sessions are two hours?
Uh unless extended by uh the governing body.
Don't pass out, Larry. Okay. Um, well, let's go ahead. This is, this is, we need to have a robust conversation. Maybe Counselor Goll already has the answer. Let's hear it.
No, I just got one question.
Okay.
We set up this housing deal.
The. Be, be more specific. Housing deal. The camping ordinance?
Yeah, camping ordinance. Okay, we got this camp thing set up. The guy can come in there and camp from seven o'clock night to seven o'clock at morning. So could, after seven o'clock in the morning, can he still go and lay on the sidewalk and sleep?
No. So physically, yes, uh but no, the ordinance would, would aim to prevent that because there's a managed place for them to be during a certain time.
That's all I have here.
Okay, the way I, yeah, the way I'm understanding the ordinance is. If, let's just say, we went ahead and came up with some identified streets. Um and um said, can't be maybe residential, can't be by a school, can't be by a business, it's these streets. Then the way I'm understanding it, that, that ordinance then would give the teeth for our, our code enforcement and our officers to come and say. You can't be here, but you can be here during these established times. But I think what I'm hearing Counselor Goll say is, let's say that established time is from seven at night to seven in the morning. Where would the person go from? Seven oh one in the morning to seven at night?
Yeah, um I mean, kinda the cop out answer is that they could go anywhere that any other citizen can go.
Okay.
Is, that's as simple as I could put it.
Is it something to think about? Because then, you know, are we, you know, when we set these streets, are we creating some unintended consequences of?
Well, vehicles couldn't park on any of the street.
Licensed appropriate.
Yeah, I, I think I was addressing more of the, the non-vehicle people that, that were open to have. Camp areas set up for them, that they have to leave. And the way I understand it, they have to leave and take their stuff with them.
Mm hmm.
Uh you know, my vision on that is. Some of these are just gonna go deeper into the brush and that's how it goes. So, any, okay, you, you answered my question, honestly.
I also think another way to think about this too is that what we're. Could, would, would you say, let me look at our city administrator here, would tonight's goal be to start identifying those streets? Do, is that a goal that you would see trying to happen this evening?
Um, that's really the will of the council. If you wanna start throwing out places to put in the ordinance, by all means you can. Um.
We have April.
Your, your next meeting is the April eleventh um scheduled.
And you'd like to have the draft ordinance by when?
It'd be nice uh to have something done in April.
Yeah, okay. So this is the time, this is the time now to discuss this. Um and so also, what we decide and becomes ordinance. Is not forever, right? The, there is, there, I think we have to keep in mind that there's a long, a bigger. Long-term solution that we need to look at as a county and as a community. But the task at hand for the city of North Bend is to decide um. To have an ordinance by July first. And if we don't, then the law is camping can be anywhere. But we as a city have the opportunity to say, not everywhere, but here. And that is, I think. Cause otherwise, this could turn into like a two-hour discussion about how we don't like it, which I know many of us feel that way. We want a better long-term solution, um but we almost have to like put all of that aside and just focus on what. You know, what the task at hand is right now.
What I.
Sorry.
What, what I'd like to see maybe is for us, we'll have what, two weeks before the next meeting? For us to walk in here and you give us homework and say, come in here with two suggestions on pick. Of where, you know, the, all the rest of time, matter and place, place is a huge one. So if we all came in with two suggestions on paper. And instead of getting way off track every time we talk about this, you know, Suzanne, what's your two? Uh, yeah, just go right down, write down the list and, and maybe that would narrow it.
Would it be enough time to go?
Counselor Schultz, let me just bat right over here, cause I see Counselor Jones was about ready to say something and, and then we'll go back to you. What was, you were gonna make a comment?
Yeah, so, so there's so many broad pieces of this. And no one's ever gonna be happy with any piece. So I, I would love to see something like, maybe not two suggestions, but. Everybody comes with six city blocks somewhere or six city blocks or a circle. To say, let's have camping here, you know, as a starting, but we have some kind of block, some, some limited block. And we consider that we're free to do things like. Rotate where these places happen, whether it's daily, weekly, monthly. But we know that most of our stuff is privately owned. It's mostly residential. Nobody wants this in their neighborhood. And so to have it in a single place. Doesn't seem particularly fair. But if we all come in and we have some suggestions and we think about how we get, we can do things as we wish.
Okay, let me go Counselor Schultz here.
Yeah, so I just didn't know if, if we bring stuff in at April eleventh, would that be enough time to have the proposed in the two weeks for the next meeting day?
Uh and count, uh we'll go to our city administrator here.
So I looked at the calendar and if the council would be amenable to get. That to me by five o'clock on April fifth. You have two, you're gonna have five, you get twenty, doesn't matter. Your suggestions are your suggestions. We'll take them.
Well, a bunch of us are gonna be at the conference.
And yes, but, but by April fifth.
Okay.
At five PM, then I will work with the public works. To put that on a map. And then for the meeting on the eleventh, we'll have a map so that you can visualize the suggestions.
Do we?
If that works for you.
Okay.
We can accommodate that.
Let me stew on that for a moment here. I see Counselor Joan has, uh Counselor Nordoff has a comment and then. Um do we, because of the League of Oregon Cities Conference that many of us are attending, do we need to move those dates? So we have. Originally. It's the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. Does that affect anything that you just said?
All right, so I'm looking at our, our March calendar. And so you have the fifth week or the last week, as I call it. And then you have that first week. Um. And for some reason, I'm thinking you're at the league, April twenty-fourth.
Yes, correct.
And so this is April fifth.
Okay. And our normal council meeting.
You'd have a meeting at eleven. And then I um have already indicated to our city recorder and to the mayor. We're going to have to change your s- normal fourth.
Yeah.
Tuesday meeting.
The normal meeting times would be the eleventh and the twenty-fifth.
I anticipate you're probably going to meet on the eleventh.
And then the eighteenth.
And then most likely the eighteen.
Okay.
Because. Um to conflict with um. The fact that the mayor, the city administrator and two other counselors are out of town.
Yes.
So.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor. Yeah, okay. Let's, so let's, let's sit on that for a second and then um. And, cause I, I think I like where we're going with that, if it fits in the schedule, but I do have more questions for our city planner and like to hear also from Counselor Nordoff.
Yes, okay, so. City-owned properties. I need to take the time to look at what. Isn't currently a wastewater treatment plant or a city building and look and see if there are any of those properties that might lend itself. To camping. So.
I think we've got that overlay map, right, that uh the city planner has.
I know it, but I haven't looked at them. Are they vacant? Are they possible? And, and several people brought up to me at the end of Brussels. Approaching Newmark, that the city owns property to the west of that, kinda on the breaks of the Pony Slough area. And like, I don't, I don't know if something would be possible, but. If we don't have the use of the city parks, which I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we do use city parks at all. Um. I, I just think if there's any possibility of using city property for this, at least in the interim. Um pending what comes, if we get funds down the road to. Go another direction. I think it'd be worth considering and um we have to have an ordinance adopted by June first. That gives us, I, I think it might be premature for us to. Try to do this at the next meeting.
Well, we did tell the public at the town halls that we'd have a draft in April.
Right.
And that just means draft.
And we have, we have little dots everywhere on the paperwork that we got as to where people think this should go. And I have not fully digested that yet.
Okay. Well, it sounds like if we come to consensus, you would have till May fifth to do that.
If that's possible.
Or extra April, April fifth. Um to our city planner as. Were, were you able to, and we have all this information in front of us with, you know. It's still clear to me that there's many citizens that don't understand when I read comments like. Why isn't county property listed and why can't we use Shutter Creek? So we still have some. Education to the public to do that this is about the city of North Bend. Um. And really even talking about like the city's property, we've done that with the overlay of the streets. We talked about how the sidewalks are city properties. We've talked about how we really don't own anything. Um there's a couple. Unbuildable lots. There's the parking lot at Clyde Allen Field. We don't, you know, I, I think it'll probably be pretty easy for you, Councilor Nordoff, to look at that, because there isn't any. There's no swath of land. Out there that the city owns. But yes, we wanna dive into that further. Was it able for, for, when the staff went through this? Um were you able to come up with kinda like the top four streets that, that citizens were saying that fit within the law? Cause I know that people were saying like, how, yeah, how about here? But like, was there? Was there something that was outstanding? Like, wow, a lot of people are saying down by the boat.
So, so I'll say what the city planner won't.
Okay.
Yes, they circled your house, Madam Mayor, multiple times.
Yes.
The most. So there's your street.
For the record, I do have people camping. And I have people camping in my backyard. Start fires in the front lawn. So they're already there, people. Don't know really what else to tell you, but it's not like I'm not affected by this.
So to answer your question, um City Hall Grant Circle had uh nineteen votes or fourteen votes, rather.
Did you say Grant Circle?
Grant Circle. Um.
Which is this guy.
This is just the roundabout, yeah.
Roundabout there.
Is, and is that, is there anything of reasons why that couldn't be? Are we in any violation? It's a highway or whatever?
Legally speaking, I think that we'd be in the clear. Um I would defer to the attorney on that, though.
Okay.
That being said, it likely isn't big enough for, to meet our need.
Not big enough, okay.
Not big enough.
But could be one of the areas.
If we're to designate multiple places, yes.
Okay, we designated multiple places. Gotcha, okay. Go ahead. Let's let him see if he's got.
And then uh the property this uh Councilor Nordoff uh referenced over on Newmark, that was a popular one. Um and that's right across the street, not right across, it's kinda kitty corner from Kenware Chevrolet.
Oh, okay, Kenware Chevrolet.
Near the bottle drop there.
Okay.
We do own a small piece of property there that uh some citizens had identified.
And it's, it's land?
It is land.
Okay, is it in a flood plain?
It is up on a hill. Um I, without looking at the overlays exactly, I wouldn't be able to answer that right now.
Okay.
Is it in the north side?
It's on the east side. Um.
Just above Guyuski's property, if you know what that is. We own the wetlands. And then Guyuski's property in between Guyuski's property, Kitty Corner, the Kenware. And the first house on Denmark. We own about a two hundred foot. We own about a two hundred foot run as well on Newmark.
Okay.
Which.
Wetlands.
Eighty feet relatively flat, then it's basically a storm range, it's beyond that, very steep slopes.
So it it sounds like from when I was remember the attorney speaking, that that's not an option. You can't, you can't have people in wetlands, you can't, it is from what what we were hearing.
There's probably an acre, close to an acre, well, I'm gonna say eighty by two hundred, that's a half an acre. Just under half an acre, that's upland, total upland. In that portion.
That could be a one. Do you park RVs there?
This particular piece of property was actually on your surplus list, the reason is is. It's going to take a developer quite a bit to get it buildable. But for camping. If you go in and clear it, level parts of it, but. But then you basically have that dropdown. And for some reason, is it, is it a power substation or something on the backside?
Power substation on the north side of it, that's across the canyon too, the property actually is probably. Two hundred by two fifty. But. In excess.
Yeah.
About eighty by two hundred. Front's Newmark, that's level and we'll call it level and usable. The rest of it's.
When you say level and usable is like RVs could pull in there?
With some development costs, yes.
So not by July first.
Maybe.
No.
No. Or not, probably most likely not.
Possibly by July first, but not very many.
Yeah.
But I mean, you level off for for camping camping.
Like tent camping?
Tent camping.
Correct.
Uh, Counselor Nordoff had a question.
Does it have street access?
It fronts Newmark.
Does it have interior street access west of Brussels?
No. No.
Is there any? Possibility of putting like a dirt road in from. A nearby side street because access up Newmark is problematic, I can see that, it's just. You know.
B Street runs. And ends on Pacific Power Substation, which is about a hundred and fifty foot square. Uh.
Got to be right in there where Jake Smith used to.
Fence enclosure, we do not have a street that runs through there. That could be physically, but you know, i- if you're talking about a trail, I'd have to look at it very closely, what happens? Is there's a very small chunk of upland. Out of the waterway, everything right behind. The substation. Uh, and it basically goes down in a canyon and right back out of it. Uh, because it's a big storm, all of the year drainage from. Off of Brussels, off Boyton Park, surrounding drainage, all done straight through that property. And that's the reason we own it primarily. Um, it's just a big.
Because nobody can.
So it kind of floods out.
The upper property does not flood out, but that's. Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's helpful, Counselor Jones' question.
Yes, is there uh, any restrictions on just designating uh sidewalk? If if we said here, you know, here's this block of sidewalk or six blocks of sidewalk, is that not in compliance?
ADA requirements, report four foot clear on any sidewalk. Um, so you'd be violating American Disabilities Act if you allow them to. I mean, we have some eighty ten foot sidewalks, don't get me wrong, but there's a required four foot minimum clear. On any public pathway. Uh, within our rights, so. It doesn't mean they can't be there, what it means is there has to be four foot clear left. Which would be your primary one on one sidewalks, which that's. Part of that, so it's assumed right away, but. I don't want to get into that too much.
Yeah, there's actually a current lawsuit in Portland over that specific issue right now.
So does, does the council feeling like they can, you know, continue to do the deep dive into some of these properties? If we have questions about something, we need to reach out to our city administrator on this, not the other departments. We don't want to be calling up Derek directly or the public works directly, um, but we can email our city administrator if we need clarification on the. Law or the street and and send him by April fifth. Um, what, you know, I guess I didn't really finish, so the question with our city planner, um. People were identifying that swathe land in Newmark.
Hmm.
Um, my house, um, and Eric's house too, right? The circle, Grant Circle, what else?
Um, some of the other top ones were the parking lot of Union in Virginia, um, just over here.
Uh huh.
Um, and then Harbor Street was the next uh, one down here by the boat ramp.
Mm hmm.
Um. And then there was two boats for the community center, um. And then there was kind of some scattered one off.
Hmm.
Suggestions.
What was the one by the communities? Oh, the parking lot by the community center.
Hmm.
And then, and then the um, Harbor Street.
Yeah.
Down there, and then there was some, I think I was looking at some of the maps, um. Some of, there is some streets down. Off of, not on one oh one, um, but. Close closer to the water, not harbor, but some down in there.
Correct.
That could be RVs.
As we currently have the ordinance, um, there's a restriction with proximity to the, to a waterway. Um, not to say that that couldn't change, but just something to be mindful of if uh. We want one, we can't have the other as far as location goes.
Wait, I don't understand.
With the waterway?
With with the waterway, if we were to put um, designate spots um, closer to the bay here. Um, we'd have to be mindful of that fifty foot restriction that's currently in the ordinance or change that restriction. Um, in order to allow for that spot to be designated. I just don't, I want to make sure that we don't have conflicting um, parts of the ordinance that make it hard to enforce.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
What do you think, counsel? What what is, what would you, how would you like to proceed?
I think coming back with three to six suggestions.
Right, I think give us homework and it's, this is the biggest thing we're we're gonna have to do, huh?
Can I copy yours?
Copy his homework?
Yeah.
Three to six uh, streets and, you know, again. Um, these are. Then then we would have some time to decide. Are we on consensus with that? Is it enough space for what we know, again, we're we're trying to interpret the law that the best we can. Um, in your, in your saying that the time, place, and manner with the time, your interpretation is for to to be reasonable, it has to be twelve hours.
Oh, awesome, man. Big gun.
That was twelve, twelve hours, is your interpretation of the law is what would is reasonable?
It's generally been considered reasonable.
Yeah.
It's not state laws.
Okay.
Been considered reasonable.
Because.
One thing to remember that your current ordinance. Restricts. Any residential property, the draft, I should say your current, the draft ordinance, so it it doesn't mean you can't pick a property. Um. Within a residential district. But if you were looking at streets, your current ordinance currently restricts any re- streets in a residential district. Uh, so I'm just, as you're looking and poking, because you're going to be pulling. What you have presented to the public. Um, in your town halls, at least at the last instance, is that there's no residential, you know, residential's out. And that's, I just wanted to clarify this. Counsel can do a lot of things. And it's not necessarily a suggestion, um, for example, what. Moves parks out of there is their day use only places.
Mm hmm.
You could take a property and make it no longer day use only. Even though it's a park. And that could by council direction. I'm not suggesting this, I'm just saying, so some of these. Parcels that you're looking at, for example, the one Susannah mentioned, Counselor Nordoff, excuse me. Mentioned is in a residential district, but very easily you can take. A property. And designate it, I'm just trying to make sure you're aware that. What you have presented to, and there was a lot of suggestions um, on putting it near the bottle drop and. That type of thing, that was one of the favorite properties. Um.
Except for the people that live in that neighborhood, right?
Um.
They didn't come to that meeting.
Residential there.
Yeah, that was part of the, the reason is this close to the ball drop, but there's not a lot of residential there, there is some. But uh, you have the ability. To amend your ordinance and designate an area is what I'm saying, but just keep in mind. That what you have presented excludes residential areas. Pretty much right now, so.
Kenware's not using seventy percent of the lot, it's empty cars.
Well, that's private property, private property rights.
Hmm.
I'm sure Mr. Giuski will sell you his property if you want, but.
Yeah, something else I think to keep in mind too, because I was thinking about like the unintended consequences, right, of if you're saying. This is the area that you can be at night for twelve hours. I feel like the thing that we're not speaking about is that there's, where are people going during the daytime? That's the longer term solution, right?
You're specifying camping, though, it doesn't mean they can't be somewhere else, they can't have camping or camping. They can't pitch a tent.
So if if.
In the park.
If Ferry Road Park all of a sudden turns into the row of campers. Everybody's like RVs. Because now we're saying you can't be over here by College Park Church and all these places, all of a sudden at the parks. You had a row of RVs, because I feel like this is what's gonna happen. We could then, as a council, look at our parks ordinance for day use and would we have the ability to say? Hey, like the day use needs to have like a three hour limit, like no loitering, I mean, I know we get into them like. Policing that and code enforcement, but I'm just like, I feel like there's so many moving parts.
So I can answer that question because we researched it.
Okay.
As long as it doesn't interfere with your established recreational activities. So if it impedes on the recreational activities, your ability to have your baseball game. Or your disc golf or things like that, so if it's actually impeding, then yes, you can regulate it. Um, but if it is otherwise open to day use, it is open to all.
We can't determine, change what day use is, we can't change that. Um.
You control your hours of when it's open, so day use means it's available.
All day.
During those hours, other than when you close it, and so when you close it, that gives you the enforcement power. During the daytime, if. Uh, camping shows up and starts to impede your ability to provide recreational services. Then in there, you have an enforcement uh, authority action.
Because once is, so do you, so what I, because what I'm trying to get at is, once the ordinance is created and you're like. Okay, you can't be at all these other areas, this is the area that you're going to be in at this time. That in in our town, really our issue is is that that we're dealing with on the streets is the RVs. That same group of RVs exists and they're going somewhere, and so if they went to. Places that were open to the rest of the public, like the park.
Or the mall.
Or the mall, I don't know what, yeah, so like each, yeah, private businesses can have their own loitering parking or how many three hour parking. Um, and all of a sudden, you know, T-ball's at six and you can't get into the camping place where you're supposed to camp until seven or eight. It could impede all the people that are coming to play T-ball at Ferry Road Park or disc golf, right?
An example would be, and and I'll continue the ferry road example.
Okay.
You only have so much parking. And so, for instance, like when you go to a parking lot and it says compact parking. You can't put an RV in a compact parking space, you only have so many spaces. At that park, I think at the end of that has a larger parking space that could accommodate. Maybe one or two RVs at the far end, if I'm not mistaken, on that parking lot. Unless the parking lot configuration was changed up, so. Again, you just can't park across three, four parking spaces, you you have to fit in your parking space.
Okay, okay. So do you understand what I'm, what I'm saying, when I'm like, I hope that didn't come off as being insensitive, but I feel like we're we're not. There's a larger problem that we're not solving with this ordinance, and that's gonna have to be addressed at some time. But these are the unintended consequences of this.
I'm just concerned that any contribution I have is gonna be crap for one reason or another, because I don't know the city streets or what's allowable that well.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
This is your lifeline, okay? And so between now and the fifth. Call me, if you want to get in a car and go do a field trip, if you want to point out, for instance, I heard someone say. You know, the lot across from, I think that's what I heard, was the lot across from. The boat ramp, okay, I know you can't use the boat ramp unless you buy back. The marine board, okay, because you have a contract that restricts it, that's off. Um, and so as those come up, very much like they have the public, you know, we'll answer your questions, we'll try to help guide you. Um, because you have to make the decision, so if there's some areas that you're curious about. You know, and you want to share the list or or say, hey, you know, let's get together and and go drive a couple. That's what I'm here for, is to help guide you through that process.
Counselor Nordoff, comment?
What is it? Let me see, how can I say this? What what is going to be the motivating factor for people in their RVs to actually go use? A designated spot rather than just moving their RV around on the city streets, you know, three days here, three days here, three. So what what is going to be the enforcement or the motivating? Factor to get people to actually use if they're, if they're in cars or RVs, cars, yes. RVs, they've got, they've got their bathroom, they've got their shower. So what's, what's, what what's your thought on that?
That's what your ordinance is, and so that's what House Bill thirty one fifteen and thirty one twenty three is all about. Is that you cannot enforce unless you have an ordinance. So your ordinance gives you the lawful right to enforce violators. So if you are violating otherwise. That gives our police and code enforcement the enforcement authority, for instance. If you have a camper that's just left on the side of the road because you unhitched and you went and you're outside today use. We have the lawful right to start the process and 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 tag and ultimately tow.
And and we didn't have that before, Counselor.
And on that note, you know, and and Chief McCullough can probably weigh in, there's a certain amount of these. Units that aren't very movable, I mean, so they're gonna get tired of driving to. Um, some street between seven and seven and then have to move and. Come back the next night at seven to seven, there there, some of these. Are broke down and people have to come get them for them and so. It may, I I'm hoping some of that takes care of itself and they just uh. Get tired of that.
There there are, there is an issue there, though, you have to think about and look at the ordinance closely, reread it. Because we are regulating the RVs under our parking ordinance.
Yes.
Which is allows seventy two hours. And there are still times if somebody's camp. Where we have to get a notice and have them move and there are. Elements under state law on notice time periods. Um, so once they've established a camp. Uh, we have to give them seventy two hours notice to move.
Before we can remove it.
So some of these issues don't think that. An RV is gonna park. And they're. Seven to seven, and they're gonna get up and move during the day. Go somewhere else because they're gonna be able to be there for seventy two hours before they have to leave under state law.
So it's not different than doing right now.
It is. Under, as far as camping goes now. Unregistered vehicles right now are getting moved every twenty four hours, we can tow in twenty four. Um, but you're correct, Pat, it's. The camping ordinance is not gonna significantly affect an RV. And so there's. Because there's a seventy two hour notice requirement, which is the same as our parking.
I mean, isn't there some sort of differential?
There's.
A, an RV and an RV that's being camped in.
And I don't have thirty.
So.
So.
One twenty three right in front of me, but yeah.
Yeah.
You can, you can designate or show that they are camping. And then once we have this ordinance in place, they can be cited. And then once we have this ordinance in place, they can be cited for unlawful camping at that point. Right now, we can't.
Right.
If, if we do get the ordinance at there. Uh, RV ABC is sitting over on Hamilton. During the night, when we've got a designated place, timely manner. And they've got two kids bouncing outside. They got dogs here and they got lights. They're camping there. We can kick them out.
If they're camping during now, just park their RV, we may not, that's gonna be a. You know, let's just say, giving another example. They do exactly what you say. They park. They see them cooking, they're doing whatever, they're, they're resting. Um, then they all leave the vehicle at seven o'clock in the morning. Vehicle's still there. Kids go to school, the adults go someplace else. They're parked, they're not camping.
If they're. Camping, living in that, say, seven to seven. And we have this ordinance, that's in violation of your.
Unless they move it to.
Well, but if they're doing it from the designated hour on a unapproved spot.
It's gonna be a little bit difficult to discern and enforce is. I'm just trying to. Get some clarity to you here, so if they go hide in there and we can't tell whether they're in there. How do we know?
Did we, we, Councilor Nordoff?
Wasn't there an issue of if people are living in the RV, then it can't be towed? I thought. Say again?
Unless we tow it with them in it. Yeah, there's always that issue of trying to catch it while it's not occupied. And then remove it, that's. But.
Can we tow it if people are in it?
Not if they're physically in it. Yeah, I think.
Done, but it's not.
Counselor Jones had another question.
Not, not good.
Counselor Joan has two questions.
Let's say the first, let's say the most important one first. Why not have a special meeting for all of the questions? And number two is seventy-two hours, that state? So we can't change that.
Well, seventy-two hours parking is state, but it's also part of House Bill thirty-one twenty-four. Once.
You have to post it seventy hours before you remove it.
Before you remove a camp.
Yes, and that's.
And the definition of a camp versus a overnight camping, resting period is where we need to be critical. Because if we're gonna say you established a camp by sleeping overnight in a tent. Then they, they can stay there for seventy-two hours.
They can be cited for each day that they're in violation of the ordinance. But you can't physically remove that.
Okay, okay.
For seventy-two hours.
Okay, so this is about, so our ordinance can, that can require that RVs move some. Um, however, the ability to cite is a little, remove it, this move is.
I don't know that we can require RVs move. We can require them can't camp in that.
Right, so if it's empty, it's parking. And do we have a twenty-four hour parking, like empty vehicle? Is there a twenty-four hours?
Seventy-two hours. Abandoned vehicle is twenty-four hours.
It's unlicensed.
Unlicensed. Is uninsured even counted anymore? Um.
Or no.
Yeah.
On the insurance, but if it's not, doesn't, doesn't display current.
If it's unregistered, it's dismantled in a means that it's not, it's dirty, not movable. They move them anyway. Um. Twenty-four hours, seventy-two hours, you can park a vehicle. So RVs are not referenced anywhere in the state ordinance. All right, so let's put that out there. Second, we have administrative. Uh, policy and ordinance that has been created and modified. Um, because we don't have a camping ordinance, but we were advised how to regulate our parking concerns.
Hmm.
Could the council create policy that banned all RV parking on public streets? Yes. Could they require all RVs on public streets to have permits? And have them displayed? Yes, there's lots of things that you have the authorization to do. You have to take the temperature of your constituents as to what makes sense and does not make sense. Um, your public streets basically have become driveways. Um, could you make all the streets one way and only have them parking on one side of the street? You know, and therefore you have no parking spaces. Yes, you could, but again, you need to take the temperature of your constituents. Um, as to what is objectionally reasonable. And so. A lot of the ordinance um simply refers to those that have set up camps. And are in fact camping, not just stopped and parking. And yes, whatever they're doing inside their vehicle. Yes, that very well may be camping. Um, but as soon as they violate the ordinance. As of July first, based on our order, is when we get the enforcement authority under the new ordinance.
So.
And state law.
Is, is, I don't know if this is the time or not.
I think this, I, this is a work session and I think it's the time.
So I, I would love. If council agreed to that, so this first stage, we get this camping ordinance and possible changes to parking, but then we agree to revisit it. Very soon after or within a few months or something so that we can have this series of events that revises. Um, because it seems like, to me, it seems like we have a lot of levers that we can use. But we're all putting our eggs in one basket for this timing thing. And the most prevalent problem we have, which is RVs, is a bit more complicated. It has a bit more ordinances involved in dealing with that. So. I would, I don't know how to make this happen, but I would love if we had it on our agenda. We put the camping ordinance in place and a month or two months or three months later, we, we look at the parking and see what has happened because it'll be over the summer months. You know, undoubtedly, we're gonna have even more. Transients through here because of the nicer weather. So if we had that as part of our priorities. To just, you know, we've got our stake in the ground. We wanna take a look sooner rather than later.
And I think you're right that it's as these, as we make one change, other changes will happen and it's going to evolve. Um, so you had, there's some things that I think are low hanging.
You have administratively already updated some of your ordinances. That, that's, that's, that's what's helping right now. I mean. Hopefully you see a very distinguishable difference than say what we saw, you know, six months ago.
Mm-hmm.
Three months ago, I mean. Um.
It'll be a living.
Yeah.
Exactly. And so. Um. So you have to focus on this ordinance because.
Now, yeah.
You, you, if you don't, you have no enforcement authority. So that's, that's the most important.
Yeah.
Then you, you sort of have to have a cure period of, okay, what are we seeing? Okay, and, and. And, and then you also have to keep an eye on, which is what the lawyers are for, on the case law. Um, to figure out, are there any tweaks? Nobody normally keeps an ordinance on the books and just leaves it there. Um, when there's issues or concerns. You know, there's, there's, there's ordinance that get on the books where they like never have complaints or hardly ever, and so they just stand. And, you know, and they're there for when you need to whack them all. So, yes, let's, let's focus on, on the three to six locations for the April fifth at five o'clock. You know, reach out to me if you, you want guidance or assistance, or I can ask ques- answer questions. Um, um, so that staff can at least get something moving forward because we have told the public that come April ten.
Yeah.
Uh, we're gonna have the next iteration of the draft ordinance.
Think I saw Counselor Gaul and maybe then Schultz and Nordoff.
I, I, I think everybody probably knows how I feel about this homeless deal, but. So there would be an opportunity for us to rewrite into this ordinance. No, uh. Recreational vehicles on the streets in North Bend.
You, you have your city attorney.
Honestly, I. It used to be if you had your camp trailer on the street, you were gonna get, you were gonna get in trouble.
Yeah.
And I think, just, just speaking for me, if my camp trailer ain't on the street, but. Just speaking for me, I'd say that the citizens of North Bend would be happier with that ordinance, even if. Ten of them people have to pull their RV off the street. Uh, I, I think that's. Yeah, okay.
So you as a governing body regulate your public.
Yeah.
Property.
Well, let me, sorry, Counselor Schultz, I think, did you have your hand?
I didn't.
Okay, Counselor Nordoff didn't, then back to you.
It's already on the books in the ordinances that you can only keep an RV on the street for three days. And um, I remember one that was particular problem for driving a school bus. And I called it in and it got moved. I mean, it's just, it's, it's, they're, they're bad traffic things. The other thing I would like to ask is. I would like to go and take a little field trip and see where that property is that's down by Foner Slough on the east side. North of Newmark. I would like to see that property. And I'm wondering if anybody else wants to.
I would too. I would too. Does anybody, and so we will arrange, you could give us a time and maybe we could look at that.
Yeah, if you have multiple councils, um, we'll just notice it. It's not required as a meeting because you're going out to explore facilities or property. Um, but I'll lean on the city attorney to chime in if I'm wrong.
Of that particular location is, to my mind. On the north side of Newmark, that little area, it doesn't have, it doesn't, it's not right by somebody's house.
Well, let's look at it. Let's, let's go. Okay, I, uh, Counselor, uh, Jones, you had a comment?
We're getting a field trip, I'm happy.
Okay, and Counselor Schultz? So we are at, yes.
Actually, um, so that is for your regular meetings. Um, you have to adjourn no later than ten thirty PM for regular meetings. There's not anything.
For work session, we could stay all night if we wanted to, um, but.
Just to remind you, the planning commission meeting tonight.
Say that again?
There's a planning.
There, okay, we have thirty minutes before the planning.
Good call, Ralph.
So, um, our homework is to, how would you like that sent to you in an email?
Which one?
That, uh, what, that each counselor is going to make sure that they go through their homework.
Email.
Look at the ordinances, get the consensus of what the constituents wants, send you an email by April fifth.
But places in particular, right?
Of, of, try to, try to get a consensus of what we think that the citizens want, what streets that they're identifying that fit within the law.
And you don't email about the field trip.
Yeah. Okay, now, um, I think I am gonna continue to power through because we do only have this room for thirty more minutes. So that.
Actually, they can relocate.
Okay.
Gave a body over there.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and.
There's probably two of you.
Move to number item seven, which is the review of the city council agenda for the twenty-first. And I'm looking at it, we are having quite the ceremonial items tomorrow evening. This is exciting. We, are we expecting all the high school wrestlers, the bowling team, the swim team in the room here? That's gonna be fun.
Yeah.
They can have Counselor Garbo and see, we'll do proclamations for each of them. Okay, and, and, and photos and give them some recognition. So, um. Okay, that's gonna be great. We'll have a ceremonial item, then we have the consent calendar. Um, in the consent calendar, uh, we have several items, the approval of the minutes. And then the acknowledgement of the bills. Was there any questions from any counselors on what's in the consent calendar for tomorrow? Number four will be, um, public comments, then we'll have, um, we have a resolution three, 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 one declaring public surplus property. This is on, so. We used to have page numbers where it would tell us where to go in the packet. Is that, does that drop off for some reason? Am I missing it? Like number five, it says resolution three, 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 one, then I thought like it would tell me what page to turn to. So, yeah, so, so it doesn't say page fifteen. Right? Let's make sure my eyes aren't.
Yeah, my printout doesn't.
Okay, so I'm gonna write it down, so I'm not like looking for it tomorrow night, but page fifteen. Um, is the resolution of the property there? Was there any questions from this, from the council on that? Of the surplus property? Did you say? Just to beat up truck, yeah. Uh, number six, um, tomorrow night is the, it says blower VFW replacements. Um. And then what page number is that on? Thirty-six?
Yeah, there was a lot. There was a lot.
Um, so, so, uh, the rut, so tomorrow night will, number six is, um, a blower VFW replacement. On page thirty-six of your packet. Um, I don't know, just, is there any, any explanation here that are, um. Soft and wants to give on this?
Mayor members of the council. VFD is a variable frequency drive. It controls the speed of the pump. It's also a starter or a blower. Or any piece of electrical motor, piece of equipment. Our main one, which we can serve energy using fails. It's a sixty-five hundred and twenty-eight dollar, sixty-five, excuse me, I don't have it right in front of me, sixty-five forty-eight?
Yep, sixty-five forty-eight.
Replacement item, um, using that blower saves us about thirty thousand a year in power costs. We recommend replacement.
And it's on, yeah, so if you want a number tomorrow night, if you're gonna be making a motion, it's on page thirty-six. Okay, and then, um, tomorrow night, so, so the agenda is. Moving along, we'll have any action resulting in executive session. We do have an executive session tonight, right? So we have, we have an executive session tonight, so we may have some action. We'll have our city administrator reports, our committee reports, council comments. And at this point, is there any other business pending?
Yes, um, you're gonna be asked to move your April meeting.
Move April meeting.
The second meeting.
Move April meeting. Okay, perfect. That is then our, our council meeting for tomorrow night, pretty straightforward. Okay, so going back to our work session agenda, we need to, um, review the urban renewal agency. Agenda, looks like tomorrow night, we have the approval of the minutes. We have our executive director's report, we have any council comments, and then an adjournment. So pretty straightforward urban renewal meeting tomorrow evening. Um, and then, um, it looks like we're able then to go ahead and adjourn. This meeting and move into executive session or.
So. Adam here?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we have our city attorney here. We also have our labor attorney. So if those two will unmute, I'm going to ask for a favor here.
Okay.
I'm here.
All right, so we have a seven o'clock, is it seven o'clock in here? I think commission, it's a seven. And so what I think is that it makes sense if we. Have the mayor read the script to go into executive session for those three. Um, we will relocate to the other conference room. At which point Mark by then will have sent me and Diana. A Zoom link. Off of your account. And we will reconvene an executive session in that, those chambers. And then, to my knowledge, there is no action expected out of any of the three executive sessions. Um, and so therefore we would go ahead and adjourn, um, the meeting altogether. Does that sound like a plan, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, that sounds like a plan and, and, and of course, any action resulting from these would be, would be at tomorrow night's meeting.
Yeah.
So, yeah, will be no action after, after the executive sessions, uh, here.
But Mark, you probably need me to send the Zoom link, correct?
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, the plan is to, I can go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Move in, read the script then for the, after I adjourn the meeting.
Um, don't adjourn, you actually are going into executive session, but informing the public that. We're going to take no action out of executive session and adjourn the meeting at the conclusion.
Got it.
Um. Because we won't be on this feed. We'll be actually on our attorney's feed.
But David.
Yes.
I, I would much rather that, uh, Madam Mayor. Read the executive session introduction now while you're still in public session. Then we end, I send you and Mr. Wolf. Then we end, I send you and Mr. Wolf the Zoom link where you can sign on in an executive session, but please read that before we end the public session. Do you agree, Mark?
Yeah, I think that was the plan that, that but that's good clarity, yes, read the script in, in this feed and we will send a new link for the council uh in executive session.
All right.
I'm gonna have to go to my other computer to do that, Mark, but so there might be about a five minute delay, everyone.
They're going to take a, um, a constitutional break anyway after they read all that. And then I have to go get my fancy dancy security stuff to be able to log in in that system, so we're good.
Okay.
We'll wait for you.
So number nine is executive sessions by the city council. The North Bend City Council will now meet an executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two dash six six zero to review information or records exempt by law from public disclosure. ORS one nine two dash six six zero two I to review and evaluate the performance of the city administrator. ORS one nine two dash six six zero two E, which allows the city council in executive session to detect, conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. ORS one nine two dash six six zero two D, which allows the council to meet an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on, look, on labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive sessions. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject to the session as previously announced. No decisions may be made in executive session. I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting, make note that the council will be um, going into an executive session and no decisions will be made during that executive session. Therefore, we will not need to come back out of adjournments. All right, meeting adjourned.
Perfect.